Good evening. I'll now call the City of Cannon Falls, City Council meeting for Tuesday, May the 6th. Order, roll call.
Councilmember Duncan?
Here.
Holst?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Mattson?
Here.
McCusker?
Yes.
Shoebloom?
Here.
And Mayor Robinson.
Yep. All please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the council meeting. This time, the chair will take a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
So moved.
I'll second.
Of a motion by Merle and a second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ares. Moves us on to item five this evening, public input. Citizens may speak to issues not on the agenda. Before speaking, please give your name and address for the minutes, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Is there anyone wishing to address us under public input this evening?
I need to sign into.
Yes, please.
Ross Nelson from Welch Mill Canoeing and Tubing. I come every year and see if there's any issues we need to talk about or take care of. I think the insurance rider has already been sent. I don't know who gets it, but somebody must over here have it already. If anybody can find my summer clothes, it'd be great. I do, I do have a request, if it's possible. At Riverside Park, I'm getting more and more handicapped people that are coming down blind or, and it's really difficult to get them into the water at that ramp or where the public access is right there. And if we can figure out a way, I'm willing to help do it. If we can make it a little less steep or make it so it doesn't get muddy, I mean, you get a little moisture on it and it's like grease trying to get down there. And I've seen a lot of people fall pretty hard down there. It wouldn't be a bad idea if we can maybe work together and make something a little bit easier to get people in and out, just even for the general public, so.
We have to look at that and probably look at what the DNR would say on that also. I mean, since it is a riverbed, I mean, the DNR is probably going to have some, something to say about that, but it's something that we could check into, I think.
We can ask Tom too next week, Public Works, and see if there's something we can do that, along with DNR.
Yeah, I mean, that's the only issue that I would see there is the DNR portion of that that we may have to deal with. But I mean, it might be something that we can look at, anything we can do to make it safer for, for everybody. I mean, because I know there's a lot of people that use your services, so.
And there is a lot of people that have these bigger, wider boats that are going in there, and it's really not wide enough for them to get down there very easily. It was easier before when the, before they put the new bridge in. It was really nice right under the bridge, a nice flat and sand going in there. And of course, it's all riprap right now, and that was the nicest place to put in. You can line up a few boats and shove them in one at a time as people are getting going. But where it's at now, it's pretty difficult. If you've ever been there when a lot of people are getting in, it's kind of hard right now. I am concerned about people because I've seen a lot of people fall pretty hard right there on those rocks getting in. Okay? Any questions for me?
Take a motion to allow the canoe rental to use the access.
Oh, yes.
Motion by Merle.
And I'll second that.
Second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else wishing to address the council this evening under public input? If not, we'll move on to item number six, a public hearing. Resolution 27D1 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes. Ann Linnell?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have before us again another listing for certification of unpaid utility bills to the property taxes. This would be for payable 2015.
You know, I noticed, Linnell, we only got a couple of big ones now. We used to have quite a few, so things are getting better all the time, but are the two big ones, are they, are they kind of cut off now, or is it going to keep going, or what's the deal on them?
No, we haven't shut off their water. One is a residential. The other one is a commercial that it wouldn't make any difference if we shut the water off or not.
Okay.
All right, this time, we'll go ahead and open up the public hearing. If there's anyone wishes to address the council, the council, excuse me, on the public under the delinquent water sewer bills.
It's in the air, I swear.
If there's no one wishing to address the council for the delinquent water sewer bills, at this time, we will close the public hearing, and the chair will take a motion to approve the resolution 2071 certifying unpaid utility charges to be collected with taxes.
So moved.
And I'll second.
A motion by Merle, a second by Bill. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ares. All right, that moves us on to item seven this evening, the consent agenda. Items on this area of the agenda may be adopted, or they may be removed and placed on the business area of the agenda for discussion purposes before approving. For the folks at home, I will read the consent agenda. Item A is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending May the 2nd, 2014. Item B are the meeting minutes for the April 15th, 2014 city council meeting. Item C is appoint Derek Lindell to the planning commission. Item D, resolution 2072, accepting a monetary donation for the fire department. Item E, resolution 2073, approving a conditional use permit variance for Mayo signage. Item F, resolution 2074, approving plans and specifications for 318th Street improvements and approving advertising and setting of bids. Item G, resolution 2075, accepting and adopting the debt management study performed by Northland Securities dated November the 13th, 2013. Item H, interest on assessments south of school properties. Item I, disposable, disposal of forfeited vehicles. Item J, add member to the reserve program. Item K, summer, fall event street closures. Are there any items anybody wishes to bring down this evening?
A.
Okay, that will be item 8A. Anything else? If not, the chair will take a motion to approve the consent agenda, minus item A, which is adjusting correct claims for the accounting period ending May the 2nd.
So moved.
And I will second.
A motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? What carries? Goes on to item 8A, which is now the council business.
Oh, oh, this, this for Ron Linnell. I was looking over the, the statements there, and we always have that Blackhawk thing in there. And I see we don't have Blackhawk, we got Fescue in there. And it's called a security agreement. It's about $12,000. I was just wondering if that's a yearly thing, or is that a six-month thing, or, and if that's part of our computer stuff, the way it looked to me?
I think, is that the FR Secure? Is that what that is, 11,000 something or other?
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that is the security, the security audit that was approved last year and just implemented this year. They presented the findings to us last Tuesday. And so Mike will provide a summary to you shortly.
Okay.
But that's where they look at, they look at all the buildings, they walk around the buildings, they look at your internet, you know, so we, basically to check your vulnerability and a lot of things. I mean, it's not, it's, it's pretty, our network, security, firewalls, et cetera. It's, it's a really thorough report.
And what do we do, that once a year or something, or?
No, and this hasn't been done before that I'm aware of, and it's typical, or not typical, I haven't, I hadn't heard of it before. It's, it's a real good idea. I was impressed when I heard that Mike was doing it. And I asked the individuals that we met with, you know, how often we should do this. And he said, once the initial report has been done, we should be able to just do kind of annual updates to see how we've progressed in their recommendations. You know, and keeping in mind that some of their recommendations, they may recommend us to do something, but there's a very, very slim chance that we'd have any issues with security or something like that. But it was really a good report, and it's about this thick.
Is that kind of like, are the well buildings and sewer plants and all that stuff in on that, or is that strictly city hall?
The, I know the, Jeff, you might be able to answer that, but I know the Public Works buildings were looked at. Fire hall, city hall.
What we looked at, what they looked at was our government buildings. So city hall, the public safety building, Public Works building. I don't know if they looked at the library or not. The other structures, the critical infrastructure components weren't part of this. But they did look at the, the SCADA components, you know, the things that were connected within the, the computer system. They looked at some of that as, as part of this. I don't think they got into too great a depth. I haven't read the full report yet. I was there for the briefing and have looked at the executive summary, but I haven't read the full report.
And it's, it may have been a little misleading. It's really a technology security audit rather than, you know, a physical plant, although they did look at the, the buildings that do contain network servers and so forth.
Yeah, it's something that, the way, you know, the way, the way things are getting so crazy, it isn't like you can just leave the doors open anymore and you go for lunch and leave them open till you get back or something, so, yeah, I think it's a good thing. The other thing I wanted to ask you about, I seen on there that we're paying some of these library things now that are coming out from that water damage stuff. So are we keeping track of all that? When the settlement comes, how we're going to settle this and who's going to pay for it, or how it's all going to work? There was the custom care for sucking up the water and stuff and?
Yeah, that, that bill in particular, where Bossard's already agreed to pay, so we'll be forwarding that, but the contractor wanted to get paid right.
Reimbursement or something.
And they're taking, they've been taking care of everything to this date.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the adjusting correct claims? Not, the chair will take a motion to approve item 8A, the adjusting correct claims.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Merle, second by Bill. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Ares. That moves us on to item nine, reports. Mr. Maroney.
Just one item to report that the, excuse me, the EDA meeting on May 14th, next Wednesday, will be rescheduled from 7:00 a.m. until 7:30 a.m. the same day. So it'll be a half hour later start. That's all.
Chief?
A couple of things, Mr. Mayor. First, if you've been watching the headlines, you realize we're into severe weather. So, you know, I just want to remind people that we are in tornado season again. Have a plan, listen to the sirens, and take shelter. If you're indoors and you don't think you're going to hear the sirens, invest in a, a weather radio. The second thing would be, we're going to be testing the sirens tomorrow, in fact. As part of that test, we're going to be working with our partners in Dakota County. They've replaced the triggering system at the dam so that it'll activate the sirens and take full advantage of the capabilities of our system. If you recall, last year, when they triggered from the dam, all that they were able to activate was the siren component. This year, they have got replacement to that, and they should be activating not only the siren, but also the voice warning that goes with it. So we'll be monitoring all of our siren locations tomorrow as part of this test to make sure that they are triggering from the, the dam as well as from dispatch.
Do you know about what time that's going to be?
The regular test is at 1:00, and the dam test will be somewhere, my guess would be about 1:20. It's going to be somewhere between 1:15 and 1:30. They need to finish all of the countywide testing before they start that, so they're going to communicate with dispatch direct, and once that's done, be able to start that process. And if it doesn't trigger everything the first time, we may repeat it a second time just to try to figure out if it's, we can recreate the problem so that the siren vendor can, can work to identify the issue and get it corrected.
If we do get severe weather, you are going to postpone it?
Yes.
Another time, okay.
Yep. Yep. But from looking at the, the weather tomorrow, it looks like we're maybe dealing with some rain, but hopefully it won't be anything severe. It'll be, I would love to see us go all summer without anything severe, but we want to be prepared for it. So, oh, and the police commissioner will be meeting following the, the council meeting.
I have nothing.
Hello?
The council, on the consent agenda, approved the item for the interest adjustment for the South Side assessment agreements, and I see that there are some residents here. So I just wanted to mention that if they are interested in paying off the assessments in full, the item that was approved tonight did allow until June 30th of this year to pay in full without any penalties. And then at that time, we will be reimbursing the interest portion of their property taxes. But I do want to make sure that everybody is clear that if they, even if they do pay it off, they have to pay the full amount to the county that was included on their property tax statements. The adjustments that were approved tonight doesn't impact that at all. They still have to make those payments to the county. We will be refunding the interest to them directly. It won't go through the county. I do have the, some of the forms here tonight. If anybody wants to fill those out and leave them, you can do that, and I'll be around after the meeting to answer any other questions.
Thanks. Merle?
Nothing.
Nothing. I have nothing.
Leroy?
Just a couple of things. We got the last water lines and the water meters all going in the right direction this week. We actually still had one we turned on last week, it was still froze. So they're all back on. It was kind of interesting because last week, we still had a temperature between 37 and 39 degrees on our water, and this week, it's up to 42, so we're headed in the right direction now, anyway. The other thing is, Tom has been talking to people, and they can turn their water off now. Some of the old sayings used to be is when the dandelions popped out, you should turn your water off, quit running it. The other one was when the night crawlers were out, you could quit running it. So there, we got both of them now, so we're good to go. And then I just wanted to welcome Derek Lindell, and thank him for joining the planning commission and doing that. That's it.
Jay?
I've got one question on the library. The east side, are they going to be looking at that or anything for the water damage?
You know, I don't have an answer to that. I'm not sure. I guess we'll have to check through the, I think, AET, American Engineering Testing will be issuing a final report, I believe. So, but I'll put that question back to them, to Bossard.
If you ask Mr. Carroll about that, he can probably tell you a lot more, so.
Yeah, you're right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it.
And talking about water, the, now that all the frost is out and everything, we will be probably, we're proposing to talk about the water credits at the next council meeting. They'll be, it'll be going to Public Works Commission next week, so we're proposing to bring it up on the next council meeting on May the 20th. Anybody else got anything? Not, chair will take a motion to adjourn.
Second.